... He's in the face. Everybody wants to have pictures of him.
Thank you.
But he's beautiful. We wanted one of you after so long. Yeah, so many people at the podium. I need to see it.
Are you?
Yeah.
They're all coming.
Yeah. Well, I think they're all more than that, right?
Good, good.
I think he's good. So he's getting excited.
Good company.
Hopefully we won't have any surprises. I'm sure he's coming. Hi, Dan. Oh, yeah. How are you? No. Oh, come on. I'm gonna take off first. Hi. How are you? You have a good day there? No, thank you. Thanks. Is that why you're here?
Yes.
Nothing to say about this. Sorry. Hey, we're very happy for food.
Definitely.
Um, Jeff is happy because we're not feeling okay with his comments and, um, we don't have other sources. You know how they sit for their, uh... I don't like it, though. I don't remember. Hey, where's me? Sound good?
It's five years. I'm not too bad.
They have two lashes. They're in the, they're in the, they're in the back. Goodbye.
We get good day. Yep. A couple of times. Probably two or three times we've had it. Our fifth or sixth time.
You just said before, even when I was two.
So a lot of activity. Our fifth and sixth. Right? Still working?
Yeah.
Still going. No problem, boom, the sugar. No, I miss you. Lucky for a few minutes. On the plank, working up, and we was working up. I wish it was dropping on top. What it is is I drank too much coffee. I actually made a thing of coke. Where was that? Then I went where on the way out? Geez.
How cute of you, though.
Sure, it gets to the same time. Oh, yeah. How much cat eats a chicken?
Oh, yeah, someone ate it.
Sure, you put it right there. Thanks. Yep.
We don't have them out from A P A. After we follow. We can't see them. I couldn't make them any better.
You can't even open my eyes. Catherine? Did you get the email today? They're talking about shutting down the NDB approach.
I didn't see that.
Yep, so that means we wouldn't...
We wouldn't have to come.
Huh? No, the, it's just the NDB approach.
Oh, okay.
So, um, just, but we could decommission it. Take it down. Hundred percent.
Okay, we'll talk about it soon.
Thank you, sir. In your travels, sir? Thank you.
Have to get everybody sick in there.
All right. All right. I'll get all the, all the inside baseball signatures and Tom Fuller out of the way. We'll get started. Welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, November 19th, 2019 Meeting of Pittsfield Town Council. I would ask that to all the lives in the affected regions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would ask at this time for a moment's silence. Thank you. All right, first item on the agenda this meeting is the adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on November 6th, 2019. Now, for motion from the council.
Will we accept minutes after then?
Second. Moving second. Questions and comments? Any errors or admissions or anything that needs to be discussed? Anyone? No? Okay, not hearing any? I sense you're ready to vote. All those in favor of the adoption of minutes of the regular meeting of November 6th, 2019 is written. The please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. Ayes have it, and the meeting and those minutes are passed as written. Next is presentations, congratulations, and introductions.
Under presentations, congratulations, and introductions, our first presentation is an announcement and information regarding the renovations that will be taking place at the UU Meeting House. That will be by Holly Zagra, council president, and she has brought some stuff in for her.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for taking a moment. We just thought we would show up tonight. If you have questions, you can ask, you can ask them of us. But we also wanted to inform the public of what's going on at the meeting house. I'm Holly Zagra. I'm the proud council president. And I'm gonna hand it over to Jess Tardy, who is Reverend Jess Tardy, newly ordained interfaith minister. And she is the minister at the UU Meeting House. And she's gonna tell you a little bit about it. She's also, by the way, the marketing guru behind stuff happening at the, at the meeting house. So I'm gonna hand it over to Dex instead of talking.
Thanks. Thanks for having us. And it's good to meet some of you and it's good to see some of you again. Madawaska Road, I think, is representing tonight. I grew up in Palmyra, just down the road. And I'm proud to be a homecomer who moved back here four years ago. And I live out on Beans Corner Road. I've always considered Pittsfield to be one of the towns that raised me. So it's my real privilege to, to help lead the UU Meeting House here in a time of exciting change and growth. It's been going really well. We've got a lot of interest. And something that's great about this opportunity is that the mission there, I feel like it's got a heart that's a little bigger than even church. It's really a space for community groups and gatherings. Like a third place in this town, right? So quilt club, the Meeting House fingers, of course, the welcome table that's put on a, a free meal every Friday for 10 years. It's a lot of people that it's fed. Concerts, lectures, uh...
Act shows.
Art shows, all kinds of possibilities, a lot of history. So I'm, I'm really happy to be, to be with this congregation, in this community at this time. It's an exciting time for Pittsfield. So as you may have heard this month, earlier this month, we took the proactive measure as a congregation to press pause on what's happening inside our building. We're gonna gut the, gut the downstairs, renovate it, and, and rebuild the downstairs so that the whole building is really healthy and hearty for generations to come. We've got some stuff to do in there. We wanna, want some baby showers and some weddings and some, some hoedowns. So we've got a big task ahead of us that you'll be hearing a lot about. But while the building might be closed, at the moment, the work of the congregation continues. And we look forward to inviting you to community events, really events for the whole community, hosted by our congregation. December, we'll be having weekly coffee hours at Dice Arts. We're in talks with the Train Depot folks to do a monthly interfaith prayer service with music. At night, we've got a Christmas Eve candle lighting and sing-along. We've got Mindful Mondays in partnership with Sandu Studio, which is really for anyone that wants to work on the stress of the holiday season. So there's a lot going on that is out and about in the community. So we're looking forward to seeing you out and about and keeping you informed of what's next and probably reaching out a hand for some help at some point. And I'll leave it to Holly if you guys have questions about, specifics about what's going on. Again, happy to, happy to answer questions. And my ministry team member here, the great Reverend Julian Busquet, and I will be, will be invading coffee shops all around town to, to meet with congregants. So we'll see you out and about. Thank you for your time.
Do you all have any questions for us?
Counselors, any questions for Holly or for Jess Tardy?
What do you think your timeframe will be?
Uh, probably because we need to dig a perimeter foundation drainage like happened at the library and waterproof the foundation June. To be realistic, though, we may, we may put four derrapides out and use the upstairs. The upstairs is fine, but, but to get all that done, it's not, now is not the time, though we are gutting it now. The basement will be gutted now and then the outside work will happen as soon as the earth thaws.
I remember those days at the library. It does take some time.
Yeah.
Any questions for these folks? Count Torsten?
I, sir?
Yes?
I just wanted to say, I'm Reverend Julian Busquet. The local community has been wonderful to us. People have come up to us, like the owner of Vills came and said, you know, I, my place is closed on Monday if you need it, or Sunday after, we're closing. I mean, the community itself has actually been wonderful. The congregational church is offering, you know, people have been, it's, it's part of being Pittsfield, for sure, that we're in the right place to have this happen because the community's not gonna let us down. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, counselors, for Holly or for, or for the people, or for other people in the audience?
I think it's, I think it's exciting to see you guys fix up the church. You know, I mean, that, I mean, check up the meeting house, sorry. You know, we're...
Well, it's a little church.
I know. We kinda changed the terminology, but yeah. But yeah, I mean, I think it's exciting and it's, and it's such a beautiful building, too. And there's so many people that are affected and, you know, there's a lot of, it's good to see it. And it, and that's important stuff, you know, foundation work is, you know, that's how you're gonna make sure it's there in another 50 years. So you guys can keep doing the stuff you know. So it's, it's great. Are you gonna try to do a lot of, you have a lot of volunteers helping you out, or?
Well, we have a volunteer council. We have volunteer members. We have, like, friends of the church, people that just use the space. But right now, nobody's gonna be in there except for the mold and basement remediators.
Okay.
Just to get all of that totally cleared out and safe. And then eventually, and we are working towards finding, uh, we're, we're, we've engaged Chimbro and Brent Newhouse and as many local contractors as we can. And we're gonna be looking, we're gonna need grants. We will actually be asking the town at some point, we're not ready to ask, but we will actually be asking the town because it is used by so many members. And it is a historic, it's on historic, um, register. And if you, I should say, if you haven't been in there, you, in about a month, should come. You should get ahold of me and come in and look inside if you've never been in the building. It's really worth your time to see why it's an amazing building and why it should be preserved for our town, for the psyche of our town.
Is it a granite foundation?
It's a granite foundation. There are incredible triptych fagile glass, like akin to Tiffany glass windows, triptych windows in the sanctuary that are stunning. And there's also 16 Harry Him and Cochran murals. He was the Michelangelo of his day. And at the pinnacle of his career, he painted 16 of these murals and they're up on the ceiling, which all need to be cleaned and preserved. The plaster is, is crumbling. It needs to be preserved. The glass, uh, structure needs to be secured and the glass fixed up, storm windows added. There's so much work to be done, but we're taking it on. And it's, it's, it may be a 10-year project, but we are beginning it now.
I know, watch out against a little bit. I mean, I was, a few years ago, I was involved a little bit with the, uh, we were trying to do some stuff at the Baptist church there. And, uh, in the, uh, those stained glass windows are just falling apart. And they're just, and it's insane amount of money to fix them. And we were just learning, I was kind of going up on ladders and putting caulking in where the windows are, like, coming down. And we were, like, trying to keep them from blowing out. I mean, I was expecting to get a phone call in the middle of the night that a window blew out, you know? I mean, just 'cause there was nothing. So it's a, it's a tough job. What are you gonna do to seal the foundation? Are you gonna, like, spray something on or put a...
Most likely, like a gunite or a springcrete kind of a thing.
Yep.
It hasn't, it's, it hasn't been designed yet. We have to do soil tests.
Yep.
And then the geotechnical guys will design however that drainage happens and the, you know, the size of the pebbles, all of that stuff. Brent, Brent did it for the library and it was a very similar process with the library's drive. So then there may also be some interior drainage as well. And then also, so that the long-term plan in, at least for the basement, is to add a commercial kitchen, which will be available for anyone to use for their purposes, commercial purposes, if they wanna make jam or hold a cooking clutch. They could do it in a commercial kitchen there as well. Part of the long-term plan is to have some showers. So like, when the power went out, remember last year when the power was out for a week? Many people didn't have power for a week. The meeting house was on because it's on the line of the hospital. The meeting house didn't lose power. So to have a couple showers in there, have the power available for community members that need a shower and to plug their phone in or bring a toaster and make some toast, whatever. I mean, you wouldn't need a toaster in the kitchen. But, you know, we have, we, we do have that space. And that's the intent behind the community center aspect of the meeting house, which is, it's back to why we call it the meeting house. That's the old name, back in the 1860s when it was built, it was called the meeting house. And then it became, over ti, over years, it became a church. And it is a church. It's still the unitarian universalist church. But there's so much more that happens in that space than just church. Not to minimize the church, because the church is actually growing. Since Jess came on, we've doubled the people coming to services. But, but again, I, I was in these chambers a couple of times in the last few years talking about the way in which the building serves the larger public, larger than just unitarian universalist. So it's an important building. And one of the things that I always often talk about, I hate to speak in terms of fear, but if you imagine, if you, if you have no tie to this building, you have, whether or not you know it, a tie to the sort of architectural psyche of our town. And that building sits kind of at the pinnacle of our downtown area. And if you, for, like, just to bring the fear thing in, which I hate to do, but it kind of actually gets to the point. Imagine that space falling in and how that would feel to our town to have this amazing building with those beautiful, irreplaceable, literally irreplaceable windows and art fall in. There's also an organ with 600 speaking pipes. It's a really amazing, beautifully built, domed sanctuary. Imagine if we all, because it's really gonna be up to all of us, imagine if we let that go and what that would mean to the psyche of our town. So I'm here to engage you all in our project because it's for everybody.
Go ahead.
So when you have a description or a narrative of what you're going to do, if you could pull that to me?
Be glad to.
I can look over the holidays for grants and foundation opportunities. I looked before, but we, this is several years ago when Trudy was on the council. I looked before, but I focused on church. And maybe we need to focus on community center, meeting house aspect.
Totally. And that is one of the ways in which to broaden that, that ask is to talk about it as a community center and who it's serving beyond the church part of it. Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I would look for some opportunities for you.
Thanks. Thank you.
We'll have several major grants all closed off by the end of the year. Just one, two big ones that's gonna start, so I'll have a little bit more time.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks for your...
All right, any other questions, counselors? Questions or comments to Holly or the group? I will say that I've lived in this town all my life, except for two years I lived in Palmyra. And by the way, I used to sit there and watch you pick up your seven-year-old brother Josh George Cray and his bus.
He was only a neighbor then.
One ride, ride in the back. So I know exactly, you know, where you lived and all that. I lived down the same road you did.
Yes.
And I've lived in this town my whole life, other than those two years. And that church has been part of this town ever since I can remember it before. And I've got no doubt in my mind that it'll be part of the town again. As there are a lot of towns that have, churches have fallen into disrepair, been sold, things like that. I have not seen that happen in Pittsfield and I don't think it's going to. And, 'cause it is more like a church, it's a, it's a combination of things. Bob and I went up through scouts in that building together. So, you know, some of our scout leaders that along with us, like Kurt Dogwood's dad and the late Randy Ray and his dad, and we all, every, yep, every, Steve Deback and all them, we all went up through there. And it is part of Pittsfield's heritage, just like the pinnacle, or just like the library, or just like the water tower. It's all part of the landscape and the, when you drive through Pittsfield, that's what, that's one of the things you see that makes it unique. And I don't believe for one split second that they're gonna let that fall into disrepair. I don't see that happening at all.
Here, here.
It's been six, I've been here 60, out of 61 years I've been here, 59. I haven't seen it yet. So, so don't get too discouraged because...
Not discouraged, but it is a big project.
Yes, it is. It is a very big project. However, there have been bigger.
Right.
And I am absolutely convinced that in time, it'll get straight around and be used to its total, uh, things that it should be used for. It'll be a multifaceted building that will have plenty of things going in it, including, including the congregation, including other things that will benefit the town. It's just, no doubt in my mind, it'll, it'll survive, but it's gonna be undertaken. And the more people are aware of it and what it means, the quicker your project will get done. Because nobody wants to see that fall into disrepair.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just wanna say we all have a seven o'clock meeting, so we're not trying to be rude, but we all, we are, we are leading.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Keep us updated.
Thank you.
And what we can do to raise, whether it be funds or, or work or whatever, a combination, both, let us know.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
I just wanna congratulate this young, I don't know what your accomplishment is, but I know you did something pretty special.
Oh, wonderful. Thanks.
Yeah, yes.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, folks, for coming in.
Thank you for having us.
So I'm excited. Under presentations, congratulations, and introductions is an update regarding the exciting community project, skating rink revitalization project taking place at the pinnacle, and Ben Hall is here to update on it.
Yeah.
Ben Hall, Pittsfield. Project seems tuning after hearing about all that. Uh, quick update, I got notes here, so don't, I gotta, I gotta read if I missed something, I'll be in trouble. What's that? Not quite yet. Uh, yeah, we, uh, we're underway with the fundraising to procure the materials, the things we need to renovate the rink. So far, the, uh, the girls and the kids have raised $1,075, all through raffle ticket sales and a handful of private donations. They were set up at, uh, at Bud's for a weekend, kind of collecting donations and selling, selling raffle tickets. They, uh, they were given, um, two box seat tickets to a Bruins game to raffle off. It's, they're in TD Buck, TD Bank Box at the, at the Bruins game on Saturday night. They're, they're quite, uh, quite the raffle prize. So they've been raffling those. They're gonna continue selling tickets through mid-December. And at that time, they're going to, they're gonna do a live drawing on the Facebook page to draw the winner and, and then we'll stuff that back in and pull my name out so I can go to the meeting.
Tim, I'm waiting. You're following me?
Yeah, so they're gonna continue selling tickets for that, try and raise a little more money. They also have a hot cocoa stand planned for, we have a hot cocoa stand planned for, uh, November 30th, 9:00 to 12:00 a.m. They're gonna be set up, um, up at Hawthorne. And I've never seen it, but they, they've done it successfully at other fundraisers, kind of, you know, a pull off to the side, a drive-through hot cocoa with the kids out there all bundled up and, and handing out, you know, capped hot cocoa cups. And hopefully people just feel bad for them and pity them. Do a little hot cocoa while they're at it. So they're gonna be doing that on November 30th. And if you drive through town, my boy there, if you don't want hot cocoa, 'cause they're gonna flag you down and make you feel bad, so. The, let's see, construction, as far as construction goes. We've completed, I guess, kind of phase one and two. We, uh, Chimbro came over and after we did a little bit of clearing and grubbing, turned back a few, a few kind of treble trees. Chimbro kind of back dragged and cleaned up the area and got it all kind of back to the level. And we were able to, this early frost kind of helped us. We were able to get in and, and get the permanent wood set this past weekend. So really, now we're just waiting for some sustained cold so we can go in and drop the liner and actually flood it out. And hopefully by mid-December, we got some skatable ice. So, so the, kind of the major initial phases are complete on that. They are. Should the weather cooperate, planning for some time around that second or third weekend of December, a grand opening party at the pinnacle for the skating rink. Where they'll do a, they'll do a skate with Santa and pictures of Santa. So kind of have grand opening, help get some families out, some kids out. We'll open the hot, sell some concessions. Should there be any snow on the ground, we'll either do some skiing or maybe we'll do some, uh, some sledding on the main hill in conjunction with it. Kind of make it a fun night, you know, and have a good grand opening party, so. So keep, uh, keep track of that on the Facebook page. The, we've had, we've had a handful of organizations help us out, donate some materials, Hancock Lumber, Kiwanis, and Stoneman Construction. Have donated some, donated some materials and made some monetary donations to help us get going. Also Catherine and the folks up here at the town have been a great help in providing some information, helping get things, get things moving and help us get off the ground. So thank you for your help with all that, all that you've done. They are starting a small volunteer committee. Anybody that wants to get in and participate for operations. The team will kind of just go through how to, the basics of opening, uh, opening the ice, clearing snow. We'll have one or two that'll be designated as the flutters for maintaining the ice and open the hot and when we plan to be open, do some of that stuff. So anybody who's interested in getting involved, wants to be part of that committee, that kind of helps open it up and, and get things going. Reach out to anybody on the committee. And they also have been in talks with, with Suzie Morton and I believe Catherine on some rep program offerings. Maybe start very small this first year, but getting kids up on skates, learning to skate, maybe a little bit of hockey eventually, just learn some basics. So they are in early, early talks on just what we could do there as far as offering some, some, you know, something that Pittsfield hasn't had in a real long time, some, some youth hockey offerings. And overall, just going really well and we're excited. Things are going, things are going along kind of like we planned, as long as the weather holds up. Again, if anybody wants to get involved or just keep tabs, check out the Facebook page. Again, if anybody wants to get involved or just keep tabs, check out the Facebook page, get in touch with anybody on the committee. Appreciate your support. If anyone's listening, thanks, I'll be honest.
Thank you, Ben. Questions or comments from Ben Hall concerning the skating rink? Sounds like a lot of possibilities to me.
He's been one of the most organized committees that we've had, so thank you.
Yeah, we've got some, we've got some folks that are pretty aggressive, pretty organized, yep.
And you may get some people that will volunteer, maybe they can't skate, but they can do other things to help you out.
That's all right.
You know, you guys, you have plenty of youth in this town that can benefit from that, so I'm sure you're going to get a slew of volunteers down the road.
Yes, it's, it's been great people. I mean, we did a little work session, and I don't even think it was posted on, on Sunday there. We had a few folks just from the town that just showed up and said, can I just carry lumber? What can I do? Can I, you know, just, what can I do with a set of hands? I'll help out, you know. And somebody reached out way after that and donated some benches and, and donated exterior Bluetooth audio speakers to mount so we can play music and stuff when the kids are skating. And we did have some, some lights donated, some lights come from Gilman. And we have a local electrician that's going to go wire them up, so we have nice LED broadcast lights over the ice. So, it'll be, you know, skating night and stuff. So, it's been really, really nice to see.
Is it going to be something that, like, what's the operation going to be like? Is it going to be open, pretty much just anybody to skate on it? Or is it going to be like a gated type thing and just?
I mean, it's going to be, we're not going to fence it and padlock it. And there'll be your standard, you know, kind of hours and days of operation. It's not going to be a, you know, stay off the ice.
But you are going to cover it or something?
But we're not, no, we're not going to cover it. We are going to post some signs and stuff, because if you do have a lot of people walking on it when there is snow, that snow gets pressed into the ice and then you have a bunch of issues with your ice. So, we're here to post some things that at least when there's fresh snow and it hasn't been cleared off.
Stay off it.
Leave some shovels and hopefully respect that. And, and, you know, if you're going to do some skating or whatever, shovel, shovel, padlock, right?
Yep.
So, we're going to trust in the community and I'm sure it will work out, work out well there. So, and we'll feel a lot of things out as we get going and what makes the most sense and what's the best for the room.
If, if somebody wanted to donate money towards it, what's the best step?
Yeah, I mean, reach out to any of the committee members.
The Pinnacle community?
The, the skating rink at Pinnacle Park.
And that's a Facebook page?
There's a Facebook page, yeah. Lindsay Turner is the, is the president of the, of the committee, as well as a handful of other folks. And definitely reach out there. I don't know if Catherine, they could come directly to you.
They could come directly here and then we would let Lindsay know.
Yep, yep, so definitely.
And that's where we, and if you, if somebody's interested in buying raffles, I guess, because that's a pretty cool raffle.
Yeah, you can, I can, I have tickets, my wife has tickets, Lindsay, Kyle, Becky Picard, Lisa, there's a whole bunch, a whole group.
Cool.
Folks that have it, so.
It's great.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah.
What do they think about it? Five bucks a piece or a dollar a piece or something?
Yeah, five bucks a piece, I think like five for twenty or something like that.
Awesome.
It'll be a live, live drawing on, through the Facebook page. On, it says, like, we have flyers, we have all the information, so.
Okay, well, check out the Facebook page.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, you've got several councilors hooked now.
Yeah, our boys that skate, they were not legal. Bombing around on it. Couple of years ago, MCI had a, four or five years, and we got all excited about that one down and kind of played on it some. And then Ed Porter was involved with trying to get an ice skating rink going on in the same location probably.
Yeah, yeah, and MCI, when they did, they realized how much work it can be.
Yep.
But we've had a fellow from Clinton, that there's a skate rink down in Clinton, I don't know if anybody's been down there. They do a pretty nice skating rink down there. And he, basically, they've got a well, well-established one, he used to run it out like a busy art. And he's actually gave us all his old brackets and he gave us all his, he came and showed up Sunday to help construct the boards with us and all kinds of tips and tricks and over, you know, seven and eight years of doing his own rink lessons, learning and stuff.
Yeah, that's awesome.
So, hopefully we won't make some of those same mistakes that they had.
It feels cold enough out there, you think? Yeah, it's an hour down at the airports and frozen solid.
Right, councilors, any other questions for, for Ben about the community skating rink? Thank you for coming in and giving us that update. And that would be a good, that would be, that's another exciting thing that's going on in town. And you, do you have to leave as soon as, as you're done speaking or are you going to stay for the meeting?
I was good, I can stay.
You don't have to stay, I'm just gonna, I was going to buy some tickets off you.
I'm going to touch on it.
Okay.
All right.
All right, any other questions, folks?
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ben, for coming in and giving us the update.
So, the next item under presentation congratulations and introductions is community and economic development activities and events. Marked item listed on the agenda is the Small Business Saturday. That will be taking place on Saturday, November 30th. And we're talking about a buy Pittsfield, buy local campaign that day. Well, we want it every day, but basically we contacted businesses and they gave the information out to announce a promotional campaign for the community. It's important to buy locally from our area merchants and service businesses. Pittsfield has all over a hundred businesses, we have a lot more than that, because we have so many in the home. But we would like to celebrate them. So, on Small Business Saturday, which is November 30th, the town's going to hold a Buy Pittsfield, Buy Local Day for the following reasons. To help the local community businesses, to bring new customers into some of the local businesses, to preserve our natural resources, because we're saving gasoline and time if people buy in town rather than traveling all over the place, to celebrate our community's resources, which are so many, and to assist in a local fundraising campaign. So, we're going to promote Saturday, November 30th, which is Small Business Saturday, and we'll promote it for those reasons too. But also as a Buy Pittsfield, Buy Local Day. And any businesses that sign up will be on our promotional pieces. And right now, we're promoting every business, but we'll also do extra promotions using this as a fundraiser project for the Pittsfield Community Theater. We're raising funds to revitalize and save our community theater. Regardless of who owns it, there is a goal of $750,000 for all the work that needs to be done there. The group has acquired the town and the committee and the volunteers have acquired approximately $120,000 between all the events that were completed and donations that was put back into the theater for structural repairs that took place in 2008/9 and the digital projector audio system that was installed. So, we will promote any business on the big screen at the theater as much as possible if they would donate to the Buy Pittsfield, Buy Local Day. And we've got a variety of items that they can do or just make a donation, which is given to the theater or to the town office and we'll promote that business. And that money will go directly for the theater, for work that needs to be done there. And so, we're in the process of advertising that and we'll continue to do so. The next item that we have, which is very exciting, we will have certificates for Michael Killiam and Boy Scout Troop Number 63 for the wonderful information kiosk that's been built at the recycling drop-off trailer. So, that is in the little triangle by the recycling trailer. For many years, people have talked about an information kiosk. You can't imagine how many people have proposed that. And the Boy Scout Troop and Michael have succeeded and it is beautiful. And so, the mayor will give us certificates this evening, first with Michael.
Congratulations. Thank you very much for your volunteerism. Michael Killiam, on behalf of our community, the town of Pittsfield would like to thank Michael Killiam for his hard work creating the information kiosk in the municipal parking lot. The kiosk will provide the town's residents with a place to receive information about the recycling program and many other items as they arise. And I want to tell you, that's been sorely needed in this town. Leave it to the scouts to get it done, okay? Nobody else is going to get it done, the scouts got it done. And the Boy Scouts in this area have, I've been proud to have been a member years ago. And they are very, very active in our community. We're very fortunate that they are as active as they are, because in some communities, it's not so much. In this one, it's always been a very, very active community. And thank you for all your hard work and the time and the patience you put into that. Congratulations and thank you on behalf of the town. Thank you very much. And I'd also like to have Travis come on up. We'll get the pictures together, how's that? Thank you very much for all your dedication, your hard work and your leadership ability and skills and time, because I know it's very time-consuming. You don't have to worry about having too much dead time on your hands when you do these sorts of things. This is certificate, Boy Scout Troop 63. On behalf of our community, the town of Pittsfield would like to thank Boy Scout Troop Number 63 for their community service efforts fostering the creation of the information kiosk at the municipal parking lot in the Eagle Scout Program. The kiosk will provide the town's residents with a place to receive information about the recycling program and many other items as they arise. And believe you me, it, it helps an awful lot of people when they come down there, because they're not sure what goes where. And it enhances our recycling program, it's, it's good for the environment, and it was a very worthwhile project. And I personally want to thank you, as a recycle team, I want to thank both of you for undertaking that and also the, you know, the Boy Scout Troop. Thank you very much. And can we get a hand for these people? Thank you. And you want me to step right out of this?
No.
You sure? You've got a wide angle lens on that, isn't it?
Make you smile, please.
Thank you very much.
As I noted, you do not know how many people have proposed the information kiosk there. And so, you succeeded and that's wonderful, thank you.
Said, leave it to the scouts to get it done. They'll get it done. If they say they're going to get it done, they'll get it done. Thank you, folks.
So, I'll just mention briefly that we've got some new, exciting economic development projects that have topped up. So, hopefully they will proceed forward. We have two new little projects, which I'll be updating the Pittsfield Economic Expansion Corporation on. And then we'll talk about those two if they're going to proceed forward. Hopefully they will, they're unique. And I will note that all paperwork on the community development block grant project went into the state domain for Innovative Specialties LLC. We had one paper that needed to be submitted, that was from the auditor, and the auditors are very busy, so we did get that done. So, all paperwork is in, into the state domain. The Northern Border Regional Commission Grant Project, we have approximately a little bit over $160,000 coming to the town. This project began in May of 2019, the construction was concluded in July 2019. There were a variety of items that had been done by the engineer and the contractor, those were just completed. All paperwork has been put together, and a box and a half of items that the federal government requested. And then I called up just to ask one question, and the next person I talked to said I only need to submit four pieces of paper. So, I did submit that, and I expect that we'll submit more here. I will note that several of the federal grant programs, the online programs are not working at all. And so, we did get this submitted in time for the deadline, which is good, and I have confirmation sheet. So, that will be good if that one set is completely finished. It'll be two or three weeks, I think, before I'm contacted. So, that leads us to our last major project beyond the airport project, which we were also able to submit all the paperwork and requirements for approximately $73,000, a little bit more than that, for reimbursement that will go back to the Pittsfield Economic Expansion Corporation for money that has been spent on all of the design work and the permitting for the hangar for the town, the hangar that will be owned by the town. And so, there is approximately $50,000 left on that grant, and that will be the next work that will be started by the engineering company shortly for the next phases to do the bidding for the project. And so, this has been a lifelong dream of the airport here. And so, we have commitment from FAA, which is Federal Aviation Administration and the main department of transportation, MDOT, for supporting the project, so we're very pleased. The last project, and the one that we've been waiting for, we received word on the Main Street Revitalization Project that there will be a team meeting of everyone involved with the MDOT project at the end of November. So, MDOT is now committed to this project. They've pushed enough other projects out of the way, they're hiring a design engineering firm rather than doing the engineering themselves so that we can move forward here. The company that they're going to contract with is called TYLAN. So, we'll meet all those individuals. And the public works foreman and myself will go down to the meeting and then we'll get all the details. And then we'll come back to start the CDGB project for the sidewalk, which is our community development block grant project. So, at long last, all that, we'll start up all the paperwork. We will contact all of the people that said that they would serve on the committee and check with everybody on the Pittsfield Economic Expansion Corporation, the economic development team, and frankly, anyone else that, you know, wants to join the CDGB Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee that will oversee the project. And so, this will be exciting, because we should go out and walk the area. This is where we can start little grant applications for different projects that we'd like to do in the downtown. There's quite a bit that we can start once we know the schedule. And with this initial meeting, the project is a go and it's going to move forward. I did look for some information and there's some nice resources, new ones, that are on the Main Street America site. There's a beautiful navigating Main Streets as Places that talks about transportation toolkit, all of the traffic calming devices that can go in. And as you know, we've got sort of a funky area where places go out for the parking and everything. I'm not sure how much changes the state would be interested in, because we did try some traffic calming a few years ago for Somerset Avenue. And the state is in charge of the overall project. But we'll see, you know, how we can fit our sidewalks in, as well as they talk about the lampposts and the pedestrian scale lighting. That's part of our CDGB project. And then we would want to look into all the other items, you know, that we already have and to improve them, like the seating, planters for the hanging baskets. We have some beautiful, beautiful ones from that the Guard Club has worked on and just amazing items that Pittsfield groups have, have done, especially the heart of Pittsfield. We have banners, but there's other banners we could have. New trajectory receptacles, I did purchase those already and did that separately. Talks about public art, there's a whole variety of items that just are amazing, talks about who should be involved, what should be done. And that's all on the Main Street America site. So, I did run that off so that if somebody wants to go on and look at that, councilors are interested in that, we can look at that. So, we'll explore all of these items now that we can actually start the project. So, this is exciting, it'll be a 2020 project. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine, good news. All right, next is public hearing's old business.
Ordinance 19-13, that the town council hereby ordains to transfer property located at 422 Honeywell Avenue, map 12, lot 66-0N, and map 12, lot 66, to Daniel Altosha for the sum of $47,544 as the result of a tax-acquired property bid. The town acquired said property as a result of automatic foreclosure of a 2016 property tax lien recorded in the Somerset County Registry of Deeds on June 20th, 2017, at book 5169, page 275, and book 5169, page 274, which matured on December 20th, 2018. The town council further authorizes the town manager to execute a municipal quitclaim deed releasing the town's interest in said property to Daniel Altosha.
All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience this evening that wishes to speak in favor of ordinance 19-13? Is there anyone that is, that wishes to speak in opposition of ordinance 19-13? Anyone at all? Okay, not hearing any, I'll close and look for motion from the council.
Move adopt ordinance 19-13.
Second.
Moved in second, questions or comments? Been all through this. Any questions or comments, councilors? No? Okay, not hearing any, since you're ready to vote. All those in favor of ordinance 19-13, can you please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Ayes have it and that ordinance passes.
Ordinance 19-14, that the town council hereby ordains to transfer property located at 103 Waverly Street, map 33, lot 41, to Kevin Heath for the sum of $6,000 as the result of a tax-acquired property bid. The town acquired said property as a result of automatic foreclosure of a 2016 property tax lien recorded in the Somerset County Registry of Deeds on June 20th, 2017, at book 5169, page 307, which matured on December 20th. book 5169, page 307, which matured on December 20th, 2018. The town council further authorizes the town manager to execute a municipal quitclaim deed, releasing the town's interest in said property to Kevin Heath.
Is there anyone in the audience this evening that wishes to speak in favor of ordinance 19-14? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition in the audience to ordinance 19-14? Anyone at all? Okay, not hearing any, I'll close and I'll look for motion from the council.
Move adopt ordinance 19-14. Second.
Moved in second. Questions or comments, councilors? Any questions or comments concerning this ordinance? No? Okay, not hearing any, since you're ready to vote. All those in favor of ordinance 19-14, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it and that ordinance passes.
Ordinance 19-15, that the town council hereby ordains to transfer property located at 367 North Main Street, map 29, lot 23, to Kimberly M. Niles for the sum of $5,000 as the result of a tax-acquired property bid. The town acquired said property as a result of automatic foreclosure of a 2016 property tax lien, recorded in the Somerset County Registry of Deeds on June 20th, 2017, at book 5169, page 310, which matured on December 20th, 2018. The town council further authorizes the town manager to execute a municipal quitclaim deed, releasing the town's interest in said property to Kimberly M. Niles.
Is there anyone in the audience this evening that wishes to speak in favor of ordinance 19-15? Anyone in the audience wish to speak in opposition of ordinance 19-15? No? Anyone at all? Okay, not hearing any, I'll close and I'll look for motion from the council.
Move adopt ordinance 19-15. Second.
Moved in second. Questions or comments, councilors, concerning this ordinance? Any questions? No? Okay, not hearing any, I sense you're ready to vote. All those in favor of ordinance 19-15, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it and that ordinance passes.
Ordinance 19-16, that the town council hereby ordains to transfer property located at Snake Root Road, map 5, lot 2A, to Glenn F. Wall and Ethan R. Wall for the sum of $3,030.30 as the result of a tax-acquired property bid. The town acquired said property as a result of automatic foreclosure of a 2016 property tax lien, recorded in the Somerset County Registry of Deeds on June 20th, 2017, at book 5169, page 190, which matured on December 20th, 2018. The town council further authorizes the town manager to execute a municipal quitclaim deed, releasing the town's interest in said property to Glenn F. Wall and Ethan R. Wall.
Is there anyone in the audience this evening that wishes to speak in favor of ordinance 19-16? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition of ordinance 19-16? Anyone at all? Okay, not hearing any, I'll close and I'll look for motion from the council.
Move adopt ordinance 19-16. Second.
Moved in second. Questions or comments, councilors, concerning this ordinance? No questions? Okay, not hearing any, I sense you're ready to vote. All those in favor of ordinance 19-16, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it and that ordinance passes.
Ordinance 19-17, that the town council hereby ordains to transfer property located at 1044 Main Street, map 4, lot 46, to Richard A. Brown and Mary L. Brown for the sum of $13,500 as the result of a tax-acquired property bid. The town acquired said property as a result of automatic foreclosure of a 2016 property tax lien, recorded in the Somerset County Registry of Deeds on June 20th, 2017, at book 5169, page 252, which matured on December 20th, 2018. The town council further authorizes the town manager to execute a municipal quitclaim deed, releasing the town's interest in said property to Richard A. Brown and Mary L. Brown.
Is there anyone in the audience this evening that wishes to speak in favor of ordinance 19-17? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition of ordinance 19-17? Anyone at all? No? Not hearing any, I'll close and I'll look for motion for the council.
Move adopt ordinance 19-17. Second.
Moved in second. Questions or comments, councilors, concerning this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor is staying for voting tonight.
Okay. We know that Deputy Mayor is abstaining during his vote. Any other questions or comments? Okay, not hearing any, since you're ready to vote. All those in favor of ordinance 19-17, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it and that ordinance passes. Next is reports. Council committees. Let's see, I'll start with, let me go with Howard. We can, what, do you have anything to report on the Bicentennial?
Only the Christmas tree lighting is on December 4th, Wednesday evening in Halfon Park and Phil's being made for that.
Thank you, Howard.
Yep.
Heather, did you have anything to?
Uh, no, we are not doing anything with the ordinance until after we get through budget stuff.
Okay.
January.
Finance committee.
No report, please.
Okay, we're second committee, no report. We're having a meeting tomorrow at 4:00. So that will take us down to town manager.
Here it is. Do we have, do you have any report yet or?
Oh, I'm going to get you last, last but not least. I didn't see you all day and I apologize. I'll go with you first.
I'm too messy.
I, I don't know. I need my glasses changed. Anne?
I don't have much to report. I did want to publicly thank the Bicentennial Committee for sponsoring the Rocky Warrior Picture Show. We had a lot of fun doing that, learned many things because none of us had really been ready for it, so we're anxious to do it. We'd like to be in the annual thing around home week and kind of be known as the place that you could go. We sold prop packs and, yeah, people had a good time. They were throwing toilet paper and, and they had a good time.
Wait a minute, we paid for that?
No, no, we didn't pay for that.
Oh, okay.
You paid for the movie.
Oh, okay.
We sold props, we actually had somebody fund those for us, so.
Just wanted to make sure.
No, you didn't pay for them.
It's kind of like your old days before Glenn Wheat would throw you out for that kind of thing.
Oh, yeah, so this is just one time, once a year.
Yeah.
Special event. So we have been working along, helping Jamie get her feet underneath her. She's doing a great job. She's hired on an assistant and she's very, very happy. We all seem to be very, very happy. Those two ladies are forced to be reckoned with. We're really excited. It makes me smile. We've got some fun things coming up in the next few weeks. Just right off the top of my head, the MCI Jazz Band's going to be doing a holiday performance there on December 11th. We've got a whole slew of movies and sponsors. We've got Santa coming to our annual free movie, can skip popcorn and soda. We have another comedy show coming, this time a different group, a whole different group from Portland and I believe Mary is going to be back again to entertain us, so she's Aria. So there's a lot going on over there. Love to see everyone and we appreciate all the support from the community and really praise, praise the, the team, we call it. They're doing, they're doing a good job. They're doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. I apologize. I meant to call on you and I jumped the gun here.
That's okay.
All right, now we'll get down to town manager reports.
Oh, that's very good. I'll be great because we have a lot of items on the agenda. So number one, because we are getting calls on this, Tine Warner Announcement. The Tine Warner Cable Northeast LLC has recently changed its name to Spectrum Northeast LLC. So if people are being called or contacted by Charter Communications, Tine Warner Cable Northeast LLC, Spectrum Northeast, these are all the same things. It should be under Spectrum or Charter from now on. Number two, as Howard indicated, holiday rights at Hawthorne Park. So it's almost time for Christmas. On Wednesday, December 9th at 6:00 PM, we will be doing the Christmas tree lighting. Our MC.
Fourth.
Oh?
Fourth.
The fourth. Oh, did I, I said the, oh, did I say something else?
The ninth.
Oh, the ninth. Okay, it's, yeah, December 4th. So Wednesday, December 4th at 6:00 PM, our MC will be Chris Peterson. He's from Bud Shop and Savin, has done this before. The Warsaw Corrs will be there and they've been there before. They're all doing a wonderful job. There will be a special guest and comments from Brad Farren. Comments regarding the year of the Bicentennial celebration, so they'll probably be speakers on that from the committee. Flipping the light switch for the tree will be Terry Verrier from SVH, which is now known as Northern Lights. That's wonderful. SVH or Northern Lights wants to get more involved with this project, so glad that worked out. Santa will be arriving and who knows if it will be a horse, pony, wagon, fire truck, but Santa will come. There will be hot chocolate and cookies donated by SVH Northern Lights. So that will be a great time. There's usually a lot of children there and it is a big event. We hope that we have snow and not ice, so people will be safer in walking around there. Number three, the town offices will be closed in celebration of Thanksgiving, so the offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday, November 28th and 29th and we wish a safe holiday to all. Number four, the new transfer station recycling office building has been delivered, as was announced at the last meeting, from, information from the transfer station recycling coordinator. So coordination is taking place to get the building all set up. We may not be able to move it over to a site, there's some concern that we could hurt the building. However, they can insulate the structure and complete all the interior work. The electrician can run all the conduit, so it will be all ready to hook up. So because of all this ice, we will continue to look at that situation to see if the building can be moved over or not, but there is a worry from Public Works that it might endanger the building and so we don't want to do that, but they can certainly get it ready. Number five, budget calendar for 2020. So we've zipped through a lot of the budget. Our next workshop, which is a true workshop, not after our council meetings, but a regular workshop, will be on November 26th, so that is next Tuesday. We'll be handling and looking at the communications department, the police department, the transfer station, the recycling department, public works or highway, buildings and grounds, the theater, and then the additional requests. So that will be the last session to handle everything, so every item will be reviewed and then we'll be back working on the budget again. And this evening we'll be sending the original budget to public hearings. Number six, we were very, very fortunate. We had a donation of swimming pool chemicals, a lot of chemicals. At first we thought we'd just go pick them up in a car, but then we learned it was a pallet of swimming pool chemicals, so that was really good. So we'd like to acknowledge and thank the Palmyra Walmart for their donation to the Town of Pittsfield Community Swimming Pool, Paul E. Bertrand Community Pool, for the donation of a pallet of swimming pool chemicals. We verified with our trained technician, Devin, that the chemicals would all be items that we would use. One of the major costs of the pool is the chemicals, so you'd be amazed at how much this stuff costs. So we will tally up the type and amount and get the value of the donation and we would like to thank Palmyra's Walmart for that and we'll do so in writing, you know, with a certificate from the council or just a letter thanking them. So this all got talked about on November 15th. We picked up all the supplies today and that is an amazing donation to the town. That's wonderful. Number seven, recreation department, winter sports. Well, the deadline was November 13th and we had hardly any applications and then they poured in, so we got a huge stack of applications and registrations, which is great. And this would be for the winter sports, which are basketball kindergarten, basketball first grade, basketball second grade, girls' basketball third and fourth. New business here is a wrestling clinic, K through four, girls' basketball five to sixth grades, boys' basketball third and fourth, boys' basketball fifth and sixth, cheering, second to fifth. And so they are looking for some specific coaches, which we do not have yet, and that would be specifically volunteer coaches for the boys' three, four and the boys' five, six. They have all the other coaches. And so if you know of a great coach or somebody is interested in coaching, contact the recreation department right off because they're going to be starting. You will be contacting Pittsfield Rec, P-I-T-T-S-F-I-E-L-D-R-E-C at gmail dot com or they have a Facebook page, which is the Pittsfield Recreation Department. And when the schedules are set up, the Pittsfield Recreation Department will notify everybody through their very popular Facebook page and the town will also promote this. The last item is number eight. I'm going to mention this one again because we're doing phone calls at the town office. We did receive the official notice on the property tax relief payments for the homestead exemptions. In order to get the special check that's coming from the state to everyone who had a homestead exemption for 2019 based upon their April 1st, 2019 taxes, nobody has to fill out another application for that. And so people are supposed to get a check of approximately $100 to $102 for everyone who in the state had a homestead exemption in their 2019 tax bill. And so if anyone has any questions, contact the town office. We will look that up for you. If somebody is new to town and doesn't already have a homestead exemption, they won't qualify for this. Extra monies that are available, because the state had more monies available and reached a certain threshold, so these checks could be released from the state. And so if somebody has moved to town and is not registered or filled out an application yet, please contact the town office so we can get you on the rolls in the future. You have to be here for a year, but we can get you started so that you do not miss your homestead exemption. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Next is new business.
Ordinance 19-18, to be set to public hearing December 17th, 2019. The Town of Pittsfield hereby ordains that 2020 capital budget be approved as follows. Town offices digitization, $30,000. Municipal building cosmetics, $12,000. Police cruiser video system, $7,000. Police station reserve, $5,000. Police animal control officer vehicle, $25,000. Fire station reserve, $5,000. Airport obstruction removal, $49,000. Library capital reserve fund, $5,000. For a total project in reserves of $138,000. Total projects in reserves, $2,531,000 and $31,800. Funding breakdown, funding by loan, $1,360,000. Funding by lease purchase, zero. Funding by reserves, $75,000. Funding by special revenues, $10,000. Funding by grants, $905,300. Funding by other resources, $43,500. Total to be raised by taxation, $138,000.
Look for motion from the council.
Move set ordinance 19-18 to public hearing on December 17th, 2019.
Thank you. Moved in second. Questions or comments concerning this ordinance, councilors? No? Okay, not hearing any, since you're ready to vote. All those in favor of setting ordinance 19-18 to public hearing on 12/17/2019, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Ayes have it and that ordinance is set to public hearing.
Ordinance 19-19, to be set to public hearing December 17th, 2019. The Town of Pittsfield hereby ordains that the 2020 operating budget in the amount of $3,875,106 be approved in the total sum of $6,406,906 be appropriated, operated plus capital budgets and further that $1,964,900 be raised through taxation, that $1,537,305
That $1,537,305 be raised from estimated revenues. That $360,901 be appropriated from state revenue sharing. That $0 be appropriated from lease purchase. That $1,360,000 be appropriated from loans and bonds. That $75,000 be taken from reserve funds. That $10,000 be appropriated from special revenues. That $905,300 be appropriated from grants. That $43,500 be appropriated from other revenue resources. And that an additional sum of $150,000 be taken from undetermined unbalance.
What's for motion from the council?
Move we set ordinance 19-19 to public hearing on December 17th.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions or comments concerning this ordinance, councilors? Any questions or comments? No? Not hearing any, since you're ready to vote. All those in favor of setting ordinance 19-19 to public hearing on 12/17/2019, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it, and that ordinance is set to hearing.
Ordinance 19-20 to be set to public hearing December 17th, 2019. The Town of Pittsfield hereby ordains that the 2020 water and sewer enterprise fund budgets in the respective amounts of $613,824 and $501,350 be appropriated from the respective estimated departmental revenues.
Now what's for motion from the council?
Move that ordinance 19-20 be set to public hearing on December 17th, 2019.
Moved in second. Questions or comments concerning this ordinance, councilors? Any comments, questions? No? Okay, not hearing any, since you're ready to vote. All those in favor of setting ordinance 19-20 to public hearing on 12/17/2019, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it, and that ordinance is set to hearing on 12/17/19.
Ordinance 19-21 to be set to public hearing December 17th, 2019. The Town of Pittsfield hereby ordains that the 2020 water and sewer enterprise fund capital budgets in the amount of $261,000 be approved. And further, that $232,000 be appropriated from water sewer enterprise additional revenues, and that $29,000 be appropriated from water sewer enterprise loan lease purchase.
What's for motion from the council?
Move we set ordinance 19-21 to public hearing on December 17th, 2019.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions or comments concerning this ordinance, councilors? Any questions? No? Okay, not hearing any, since you're ready to vote. All those in favor of setting ordinance 19-21 to public hearing on 12/17/2019, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it, and that ordinance is set to hearing.
Resolution 19-117, result of the town council of the real estate property account 2322 for 2017 and 2016 property taxes, for principal in the amount of $101.43 and $98.98, plus cost and interest, for a total to not exceed $358.26, as the mobile home is uninhabitable and deteriorated.
What's for motion from the council?
Move we adopt resolution 19-117.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions or comments, audience? This is a resolution, so, audience, is there anyone in the audience this evening wishes to speak concerning this resolution? Anyone at all? No? Okay, I'll turn to the council. Councilors, questions or comments concerning this resolution? Is this the one that's on really straight, Catherine?
No, this is the one that's up by Hood Brook. We had looked at it last year. Looking back and take finding, all the notes, there's been about 13 people involved with this. It's not assessed to the correct owner. It was not gone through the registry. They were just bills of sale between people. It's uninhabitable, deteriorated, can't move it. It needs to be taken off the rolls.
Does this include the land that it's on?
No, it's just the mobile home.
Okay.
Yeah, there's been so many deals and arrangements that it needs to go off the rolls.
The tax being paid on the land, or?
The land is fine, yes.
So the landowner and the mobile homeowner, two different people?
There's multiple people involved. There's been multiple sales of the same property.
Okay. That's what I thought. But any other questions or comments, councilors, concerning this resolution? No? Not hearing any, since you're ready to vote. All those in favor of resolution 19-117, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it, and that resolution passes.
Resolution 19-118, result that the town council authorized the town manager and deputy tax collector to issue notices of tax-quiet property sale and place a tax-quiet parcel out to bid as follows. Property map 18, lot 64, located on 456 Cannon Road, Pittsfield, Maine.
What's for motion from the council?
Move we adopt resolution 19-118.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions or comments, any audience? Anyone in the audience this evening wish to comment on that? Yes. Please state your name, I know who you are, but...
Amanda Colmore, Library Street. I just wondered, are you changing the minimum bid?
Yes. Yes, we will. We had put $30,000 on the property. That was a very reasonable bid, but it was high evidently for a tax-quiet property area at that time. The house is actually in very good condition. There's land involved with this, and so we're going to try to bid this out again. I did, we did try to have highway and fire department go up and look at it. Everybody's been so busy to see if we could, you know, haul off the material, and maybe that would help, but let's try to bid it out again and see what happens, and then we may need to make some changes up there. The outbuildings, which were a detriment to the property, burned, which the fire department came back and said, "Your property is now worth a lot more money," because these were gone. The house is in very good condition. We did secure it.
Thank you.
Audience, any other questions concerning this resolution? Anyone else? No? Okay, not hearing any, I'll turn to the council. Councilors, questions or comments concerning this resolution?
This is the one that we bid on before and no bids on?
Correct. It's the one that used to be the former Pets and Things. The town had a big economic development along it, and you know the whole history.
Any other questions, councilors? No? Okay, not hearing any, since you're ready to vote. All those in favor of resolution 19-118, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it, and that resolution passes.
Resolution 19-119, result that the town council approved the request for proposals for power line tree trimming and authorized the town manager and public works foreman to issue the RFP for said work.
What's for motion from the council?
Move we adopt resolution 19-119.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions or comments, audience? Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this resolution? Anyone in the audience? No? Not hearing any, I'll turn over to the council. Councilors, questions or comments concerning this resolution? No? Okay, not hearing any, since you're ready to vote. All those in favor of resolution 19-119, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it, and that resolution passes as well.
Resolution 19-120, result that the town council approved the request for proposals for a Pittsfield municipal airport obstruction removal and authorized the town manager and public works foreman to issue the RFP for said work.
What's for motion from the council?
Move we adopt resolution 19-119.
120.
Oh. Yep.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Audience, anyone in the audience wish to comment on this resolution? Anyone at all? No? Okay, not hearing any, I'll turn over to the councilors. Councilors, questions or comments concerning this resolution? No? Okay, not hearing any, since you're ready to vote. All those in favor of resolution 19-120, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it, and that resolution passes. Next is discussion items.
Yes, for discussion items, during the budget process, we have received financials. And so, on the, we are through reconciling the authority for 2019 records. And so, the items that we usually talk about are the budget expenditure report, the revenue collection report, surprise tax, structure, state revenue sharing. And so we are now through 83.3% of the year. We have received for the budget expenditures of 71.1% for municipal, 65.9% of municipal water or sewer, which makes sense because of depreciation and transfers that are done only by the auditor at the end of the year, which will increase the amount. We try to be conservative, because our revenues are coming in slow. There will be a lot of revenues that come in in December. It's always interesting when your largest amounts come in in December, the last month of the year, because you need to balance everything out, but that is the way it is, and has been for decades. Revenue collections, we are through 83.3% of the period and 54.9% of the municipal revenues that are received, 57.1% of municipal water or sewer. Excise tax collections, for a month, a couple of months, we were ahead, and these change during the months, depending on when the fleets or the trucks come in for the registration. We are now $2,903 behind the 2018 collections at this time of the year. For state revenue sharing, this is wonderful, that the law changed, so that the towns are getting a bit more of the revenue sharing, after years of money being used for other purposes. So for this period, we have received $66,698 ahead of 2018 collections. So that is very helpful. And so there will be some transfers and other checks and items that come in yearly that will be coming in in December. Some are starting to already come in in November, and then we'll have the regular collections. And so the percentages will increase, as well as expenditures. We'll have some last-minute purchases from some of the departments. We'll be evening out all of the accounts in terms of the departments, the transfers in December. And so we will proceed forward here. So I'm all set.
Okay.
We don't go through all of them, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Okay, thank you. Next is reports. Audience, anyone in the audience wish to speak this evening? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Amanda Colmore, Library Street. Catherine, I just wanted to check on the status of the Library Street light.
Okay, we just sent that one in, and as I had noted, it's been a lot slower on the response. We used to get these fixed within a matter of 10 days, sometimes it's two to three months now. That change seemed to happen with the change in ownership, but it's been a problem over the last couple of years.
Is there anything we can do to kind of push that along? Because there are a lot of kids that walk on that corner, and somebody's going to get hit.
We did contact them twice. What we can do, and what we've done with some of the other ones, is we call up some of the account representatives. We've had a various number of people over the years. The current ones aren't that accessible, but the former ones are still there, and they've been promoted to different levels. We can contact a couple of those.
Okay. I'm just worried about one of the high school students getting, as they're walking around there.
No, I understand that the dock area...
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience this evening wish to speak? No? Okay, then we'll go with council, and I'll start with Heather.
Heather, no reports.
Okay, Howard. No reports. Okay. Matt?
Nothing, no report. Thank you.
Caleb?
No report.
Bob?
I've not been saying no report. I just want to add a few things I'd like to say here. First thing I'd like to say is congratulations, M.C.I. Football team won the regional championship last weekend. That's one of the things we've been, Pittsfield together, I don't know what it is, but you go to the games down at the park and down at the school, and there's tons of people there. I sat and watched it on TV this weekend, and when they showed the sidelines, the stands were packed. It wasn't like, you couldn't sit another person in a stand, so it's always good to see that happening. And I'd like to wish them good luck this weekend, that they play better. I'd like to congratulate Michael on the certificate tonight. I'd like to thank Ben for the update. That sounds like the pinnacle skating rink project coming right along. Dan, thank you for your report on the theater. Sounds like you guys are doing good work over there. The Meeting House, I wish them all the best. I went to church when I was a youngster, went to Sunday School there. Barbara Jones was my Sunday School teacher for years. So I wish them all the best. I hope that project comes out well. Catherine, thank you for all your hard work, and the Main Street project, sounds like that's actually going to come into fruition this year, or next year, actually, but thank you for all your hard work. That was a project and a half for you, I know.
Thank you. We'll get the Main Street project going the next day after we meet with M.D.O.T.
Yeah, that's all I had this evening.
Thank you, Bob. I'm going to reflect, I'm just going to be brief. I'm going to reflect the same things, basically, that Bob said. I wish the, I wish the Meeting House nothing but good luck, and I know that's a huge project, but again, like I said, and I meant what I said there, I can't even imagine that townspeople are going to let that fall into disrepair. They'll be, they'll come out, and they'll be volunteers. It's a long-term deal, but, you know, that's a historical building, and I am absolutely certain and convinced that that will work its way through the process, and it will be a better building, in better shape than it's ever been in, when it's all said and done, so. And, you know, people will volunteer, people will donate money, they'll donate time if they've got it, and between all of it, it'll work itself through. I have complete faith in that. I do want to thank the scouts for coming down. I want to congratulate them on the troupe and putting the kiosk up, and the boy scouts in this area do fantastic work, they always do. And I want to thank Ann for her report. It sounds to me like the theater's moving in a very positive direction. That's good. And Catherine, keep up the good work upstairs. I know you guys have been very, very busy up there, and there's a lot of projects to do, and I want to, it's good news on the, on the Main Street project, and we'll get going on that next year, and I think it'll be very well. Everybody, I, when we get this all done, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And when we get into the things, when it comes to outside there, I think we're going to do something about the bricks, right, Catherine?
Oh, yes.
Because I don't want to have to see you in that condition again, because that's going to be somebody else. I mean, that's very dangerous out there, that needs to be addressed.
Yes, and Public Works was, you know, has been very apologetic. They just could not fit it in their schedule. We then did it out, and obviously, you know, we had a ridiculous price. So that whole area is combed off, and, you know, this was, I'm just clumping my own wall.
Again, I don't want to see anybody fall. I don't care if they're 90 or they're six, it doesn't make any difference, I don't want to see anybody else get hurt.
Not 90 yet.
All right, and otherwise, Matt, I have nothing else, I'll work with Germaine.
We do have Germaine.
Well, here are a second.
Second.
All those in favor of Germaine, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Ayes have it, we have Germaine. Now I take a five-minute break, feel free to...
No, we're not. There's no budget.
No budget tonight. That's right, too. That's next week.
All we want to do is maybe...
You know what it is? I, if I don't have my calendar in front of me, unfortunately, I have a very...
I want to tell you, everybody wants to leave.
I got a sign...
Hello, I'm very, very... It's the captain.
Sorry about that.
Who's the one?
No, that's last week. Yes, yes, that's where I'm at. Next week, we're going to have a workshop.
We have a big workshop.
Sorry, they'll be all one of these days.
They can't afford it anyway, that night.
Oh, yeah. Well, I've come down here for a few times. I didn't come that night.
Okay.
She called you off.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, where?
You want to do it back?